It started.
Hey, I'm waiting for it to. As you guys can see. Yes.
Looks like we're streaming. Are we? Have we recorded yet or no? Oh, there we go. Has anybody got the recording? This meeting is not recording message. Okay, perfect. All right, everyone can hear me just fine today?
I didn't get the recording thing.
Yeah.
Barb's shaking her head now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was the closed captioning thing I got. Good job, Barb.
Is the live stream new? I feel like we haven't had that before.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, you guys are all set in there?
Give us, give us just another minute, Nick. So, so Ashley, to your point, we are now streaming live on YouTube so that we can link to these more easily via the COBAC website. So we need to do two things. We're streaming it and recording it.
Cool. Sounds like we're recording them.
Yep. Excellent. Well, welcome, everybody. Happy fine winter summer here in Bend. And today is Thursday, June 23rd, and we will call the meeting to order at 1:04 PM. And this is the City of Bend's Accessibility Advisory Committee. Going into our agenda, we'll go ahead and do a roll call here. I am the Chair of COBAC, and I go by he/him/his. And I'm also an architect in the City of Bend. And then I'll go ahead and turn it over to the next member. We'll go ahead and turn over to John.
Hi, my name is John Halen, Vice Chair. I own a business in Bend, and I live here with my family. Who's next?
All right. Ashley.
Hello. I'm Ashley Schaefer. I guess I'm the only Ashley now. I use she/her pronouns, and I am the owner of Empowering Access. I do disability, equity, inclusion consulting. I live in Portland now, though. You switch. Barb.
All right. And we'll go to Cory.
Hi, I'm Cory Sparks. I use she/her pronouns. I work at Central Oregon Land Watch, and I have epilepsy. That's my disability.
Thank you, Cory. And then we'll go to Whitney.
Hi, my name is Whitney Bennett. I use she/her pronouns and a member, and I work at Canute Option.
Thank you, Whitney. And then we will go through and do some introductions for our new members who are present today. And but before we do that, Amanda Hamer, it will be absent today. And then that's our call to order. Let's go ahead and move to item number two on our agenda. Sharissa, do you want to take over for the land acknowledgement? Sharissa, Lisa, are you guys still there?
You're muted.
Okay, well.
Okay, you can hear me now.
Yes.
We're here. We're just getting some feedback in the room via the speakers. So we actually heard each of you introduce yourselves twice, maybe three times. It was very exciting. So thank you. We've got ideas here now, though. We're getting this figured out. Really glad we're talking before we have. Can you hear that?
You kept getting progressively quieter.
That'll work. So let me go ahead and do the City of Bend land acknowledgement. This will be new for the new folks. The, the accessibility program became part of the Equity Department earlier this year, actually late 2021. And as we shifted away from just legal compliance toward larger equity, we started to infuse some of the things that other committees and commissions are doing. So for example, the Human Rights and Equity Commission, as well as City Council and other committees and commissions does a land acknowledgement. So a little context for new folks on what I'm about to read. "We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north of the Columbia River is the original homelands of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of 1855 while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wana Llama, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamath Trail ran north through this region to the great Salilo Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land. Thank you."
Thank you, Sharissa. With that, we'll go into item number three of our agenda today, which is the approval of the minutes from May 26, 2022, which was our regular COBAC meeting. Is there, has there, is there a motion to review the minutes or to approve the minutes as is?
A motion to approve the minutes as is.
I second.
Do we have a second? Okay.
Whitney, a second.
All right. Okay, and then we'll go ahead and vote on that motion. All those in favor of approving the May 2022 COBAC meeting minutes? Hi, or raise your hand? All those opposed? All right, meeting minutes are approved as is. Thank you all for that. And now we'll go ahead and open it up to item number four on our agenda, which is the public comment period. And looking through our attendees, most of the attendees today are either city staff or COBAC members. So I don't think we have any public comments unless anyone else from the committee would like to make a public comment. Okay. If there's no public comments, we'll move into, right along into item number five, which is our COBAC business. And so myself and John will talk through this a little bit. And so obviously, as you've seen, we have some new members, and I'll let Sharissa talk about that and the appointment.
Thanks, Nick. So we did have a number of folks apply for COBAC membership. Nick, Barb, Lisa, and I held interviews. And I think we found some really great folks who are passionate about accessibility and interested in making Bend a more equitable, inclusive, and accessible community. So with that, the new members of COBAC who've all been appointed by Eric King and accepted their appointments are Carl Burnett, Jenny Peskin, and then Erin Rivers. So I'm really excited to have all of you join. I think with that, if each of you maybe want to take a moment to introduce yourselves and talk about your interests, that would be great.
Sure, I can start. My name is Carl Burnett. I use he/him pronouns. I have lived in Bend for about six years. I am a resident with a disability. I use a wheelchair, normally a manual wheelchair, although at the moment have a broken collarbone, and I'm using a power chair to get around. See, I'm involved with Oregon Adaptive Sports as a volunteer and also as a participant in some of their programs, began to outdoor recreation. Professionally, I work in the knowledge engineering field. I have a degree in library and information science. And I work remotely for a company called Healthwise. We're based in Boise, Idaho, and we do patient education. I think that's it, unless there's anything else you want to know about me.
That's great. Thank you, Carl. Welcome to the, to the committee. Appreciate you being here today and.
I'm excited.
Through your, yeah. And we'll go ahead and Erin.
Hi, my name's Erin Rivers, and I apologize. There's some hammering in the background and some construction done. I'm an investment advisor, and I own a firm called Living Earth Investments that focuses on sustainable and sort of thoughtful investments. My family and I moved to Bend in 2021, and my interest in COBAC probably stems mostly from, I have a daughter with Down Syndrome. She's 10. And just trying to kind of see the future for her and do what I can to hopefully make a positive contribution, make Bend a accessible and, I guess, equitable community for people who might have similar situations as she does. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm excited to get to work with COBAC.
Excellent. Thank you, Erin. Thank you for joining. And then Jenny.
I'm Jenny Peskin. I use she/her. And I've lived in Bend since 2002. And when I first arrived back in '02, I began a job with Human Dignity Coalition, a nonprofit working on social justice issues. And so in 2004, I think it was, in that work, we were part of helping a group of citizens who had brought forth a lawsuit to the City of Bend and Deschutes County, eventually resulting in the DOJ settlement agreement. And I was one of the early folks on the Central Oregon, I don't remember the name, COCA Central Oregon Community for Access, Committee for Access, that was formed as a part of that settlement agreement. So my history, it was a long time ago. I haven't done the work in about 10 years. I left Human Dignity Coalition about 10 years ago. But for most of my tenure there, I was involved with COCA and involved with education and advocacy and working closely with people with disabilities in the community and with that committee and with the City Council at the time, trying to get just a culture change in, in the city and the county to actually take accessibility with some seriousness to take it on. So I'm, I've come back around 10 years later, and I'm really interested to see changes and to see where there's still opportunities for growth. In my, my day job, I'm a yoga and mindfulness teacher. I work with people, I work with people in recovery, sometimes people with disabilities who come through my programs. And I'm a singing teacher as well, so help people find their voice. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Jenny. You're welcome.
For anyone who doesn't know, this means applause and ASL, just to make sure. Excited to have you here, Jenny.
Yeah, I thank you for joining. We're excited to have you onboard.
Yeah, thank you and welcome, everybody. With that, we're going to do some hybrid meetings in August, and I'll let Sharissa talk a little bit more about that. As witnessed by our council chambers right now.
Yeah, so we're pretty excited in August to resume offering an in-person option, recognizing that for folks in the disability community, having a virtual option is really important as well. We are testing today, making that hybrid opportunity work. So look for more information, you know, as we get closer to that date, but wanted to let folks know that come August, if you do want to come and hang out with Lisa and I in person, you will be able to do so in council chambers at City Hall.
Do we get to sit in the council chairs?
Yes. You can sit up here at the dais if you'd like. We've made sure that it will be accessible for everybody to be able to access the seating area.
Will there be a gavel?
Oh, that seems like an important detail. We haven't finalized yet, John. I'll let you know. Barb, does Mayor Goodman?
Bring your axe.
I, I think I know where the gavel is kept. I think I might be able to get that gavel out.
That'll be, that'll be interesting. I haven't used the gavel in some time, since college, I think. Well, excellent. Well, that, I'm excited. I'll plan to be there in August, barring any unforeseen circumstances. And so I'm looking forward to that and getting out of the house for this meeting and meeting everyone in person. I, you know, besides Sharissa, I don't know if I've met everyone in person. So this will be exciting. Excellent. Onto our next item of COBAC business. I was, are there any other business items from the COBAC membership and the committee members or the new members that we'd like to bring up today?
I have something to bring up that I should have brought up when we were talking, when we brought up the minutes from the last meeting, but I was just looking through those, and I noticed that there were a couple of maps that were going to be sent out. And I just realized that I haven't gotten to see those yet, and I was wondering if those have been sent out yet.
I think we do have those. Good catch there, Carl. We got those after the meeting from Karen Swersky with the consulting company. Let me sort through my email one more time and find those and pass those along to the group. One thing that I will say is if you need assistance accessing the content of those maps, please let Lisa or I know. Maps can be difficult under the best of circumstances, and if there are any accessibility concerns, it can be even more challenging. So please let Lisa and I know if you need assistance. But yes, Carl, we'll make a point to get those sent out later today or tomorrow.
Thanks.
Um, I have a quick question as well on that to follow up from last meeting. Was there also, forgive me if I had, just didn't see it in the email, but a link to that interactive map that had the, it had like an overlay of, shoot, what am I trying to say here? There was, it was a map of data that was gathered with like econ, uh, income information? Yes. Lisa knows what I'm talking about. Is that in the email or any mail?
As far as I know, she wanted to come back with somebody to actually go over that with you guys, because I guess there's a lot of layers, and I'm not sure if that link is up yet, but I will find out. And we could get you both the actual maps that we were, that we received, and then also if the link is up right now. But she did want, Karen did want to come back and go over that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Cory and Carl. Is there any other business, COBAC business that we'd like to talk about before we go to our next agenda item? Okay, then we will go on to our item number six in our agenda today, which is the open meetings training. Ian, who's the Assistant City Attorney from the City of Bend, I will go ahead and turn it over to you, and welcome.
Thanks, everybody. So brief introduction, Ian Lighthizer, one of the cities in-house attorneys. There are four of us in the office. We're essentially the City of Bend's in-house law firm. So in doing that, we give advice to city staff, to city council, city counselors, members of the city's advisory bodies, including COBAC if necessary. So we're, we're full service. Our client, technically speaking, is the entity of the City of Bend, but what that means is we're, we're dealing with the people who work and volunteer for the city. And so we try to give advice, solve problems, maybe solve more than we create, and, and sometimes do some training. So I, what I'm going to do today is take maybe 10, maybe 15 minutes at most and talk about public meetings under Oregon law. Oregon has a set of statutes that are known as the Public Meetings Law. They define who is subject to the Public Meetings Law, what the requirements are, certain exceptions to the law, and really how, how the law works. And the, the policy basis for the Public Meetings Law in Oregon, and this is the same in most states, is that the public deserve to be informed and have insight and a window on to how public entities make their especially higher level administrative and policy decisions. So Public Meetings Law is intended to provide some of that access and kind of prevent or do away with sort of the proverbial smoke-filled back room where decisions get made for reasons that the public may not be privy to and reasons that may or may not be good reasons. The Public Meetings Law is designed to sort of do away with that, that kind of anachronistic and probably not super healthy way of making decisions that impact the public. So one thing the Public Meetings Law does not do, it does not provide a window to the public on every decision that gets made within a public body. Staff make a lot of decisions on a day-to-day basis about how to do things. The Public Meetings Law does not provide a legal window or an opportunity to see how every one of those decisions works, because that just wouldn't be practical. But, but it does, in its application, give the public a window on to, again, what I would call sort of higher level policy and administrative decisions and their processes get made. And, and the way the law does that is it applies to what state law calls governing bodies of public bodies. And I'll break that term down briefly. That the, there's an obvious governing body of the City of Bend, and that's the City of Bend City Council. I think that's kind of intuitively understandable. The City Council is the governing body of the City of Bend. As an analog, the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners is the governing body of Deschutes County. It's clear and I think understandable to almost anyone why the Public Meetings Law applies to those, those groups. So what is a little bit less intuitively logical is that other groups within the city's structure, and I'm just going to focus on the city, but this is clear of other entities in, in Oregon too. Other groups within that structure are also considered governing bodies that are subject to the Public Meetings Law. And what the law says is that, and I'll use the City of Bend as an example again. Yes, of course, the City Council is the governing body of the City of Bend, and so the Public Meetings Law applies to the City Council. But there are other groups within the city's structure that because they have the capacity to make recommendations to the City Council, they're also, under the law, considered governing bodies, and the Public Meetings Law also applies to them. So in the City of Bend's case, that includes groups like the Planning Commission, the Human Rights and Equity Commission, the Neighborhood Leadership Alliance, the Bend Economic Development Advisory Board, the Environment and Climate Commission, and I'm probably missing some, but these are all advisory bodies that on a permanent basis exist in the city's structure. And really what they do, the majority of what they do, or the essence of what they do, is, is things come to them, and ultimately what they have the ability to do is to make recommendations on those things, those potential decisions, those policies, those proposals. Those groups have the ability to make recommendations to the City Council. Do this thing, don't do this thing, you know, adopt this policy, change this policy. In the Planning Commission's case, you know, approve these changes to the development code, or approve or don't approve this master plan that a property developer wants to do. What all these groups have the ability to do at, at its essence is to make recommendations to the City Council. So the, the results of that is that the Public Meetings Law applies to all of those groups as well as the City Council, and it impacts how they have to do business. The reason I'm talking about it with all of you today is because even though the COBAC is a, I'd call it a little bit of a hybrid group in that it, I would say largely advises city staff. There are times when COBAC might be or has in the past made recommendations to the City Council. So because of that, there is at least an argument that the Public Meetings Law applies to the COBAC, because the COBAC could be considered a governing body, just like all of the other boards, commissions, and advisory groups that exist in the city's structure. So historically, what we have done at the city is treated COBAC like those other advisory groups and sort of had, had COBAC run, run its processes, proceedings, and meetings in a manner that is consistent with the Public Meetings Law. So that's why, that's why we're talking about this today. So that, that's kind of the background of the application to COBAC. Any, any questions there before I dive into a little bit of the, the substance? Seeing none? Okay, hearing none. So the main thing that the Public Meetings Law does to groups to which it applies is it governs how you do business. And the main way it does that is that it hinges on this idea of a quorum. And interestingly, the, the Public Meetings Law, again, Oregon state law, it does not define what a quorum is. It is, there, there's a sense that unless otherwise specified, a quorum is, legally speaking, it's the minimum number of a group that is required for the group to get together to do business. And the general default is that's a majority of the group. So using our City Council as an example, that's a seven-member body, four members is a majority, so four members is a quorum. So if the City Council wants to meet, if they want to have a meeting, there have to be at least four of them who are present at the meeting for the meeting to sort of be a real thing and be legally recognized and, and for the council to actually do anything. So although state law doesn't define what a quorum is, it's generally considered to be a majority of the voting members of a group. So with COBAC, and here's where I'm going to need some help. I know the COBAC Charter calls for 11 members. I, I can't recall, or maybe with the appointments, I've just lost track, how many current COBAC voting members there are. Can somebody help me there?
Sure. Ian, we currently have nine members. There is something unique to the COBAC Charter, though, where we specifically defined a quorum to be a majority of the members present, so.
Right, right. And that, that's in the COBAC Charter. So right now, and this, this can get a little interesting. If, if there were a full complement of members of 11, let's see, I'm doing my math, I'm not very good at, a quorum would be six. With, with nine members, a quorum is five. So COBAC currently needs five of you to be there to meet and do any business. And, and the, the application of that to the Public Meetings Law is that, and this isn't really expressed in the law, but this is, the reality is as individuals or even as, as a small group, none of you really have the authority to do anything on behalf of COBAC. It takes, it's, it's the group as a whole that has the authority to do things, to take actions, to decide issues, to make recommendations to council. So right now with nine members, there need to be five of you to get together and have a meeting in order to do anything, to take in information, to vote on anything, to make a recommendation. So what the Public Meetings Law says is that a quorum, the minimum number of you that are required to do business, which right now for COBAC is five, a quorum of you cannot, cannot meet outside the scope of a properly noticed public meeting. And that's, again, that's to avoid the smoke-filled back room. It's to prevent five of you from getting together at the pub and making important. It's to prevent five of you from getting together at the pub and making important decisions where the public can't see what's going on and then doing stuff that could impact the public or important policy or administrative decisions. So what the law does at its essence is say that if, if a quorum of you are getting together to do anything, deliberate towards the decision, make any decision, it has to be in the scope of a properly noticed public meeting. Um that can get tricky and has gotten tricky in recent years with the proliferation of communications technologies that didn't exist when the public meetings law um was originally conceived and drafted. And the way that is manifested is courts have said, and this is where I get a little bit into the sort of be careful mode. Courts have said that public bodies can effectively meet through serial electronic communications. In other words, if members of a public body start emailing each other, and I see a hand up, I'll stop in a second. If members of a public body start emailing each other, and over the course of, let's say, a day or a couple days or a week, all of a sudden you have a quorum of the members of that public body on that email chain talking about stuff that is within the scope of what that public body does. You could have a public meetings law problem in that you could have, I'll say unwittingly or unintentionally violated the public meetings law because the public can't see these emails in real time. They can't see what you're talking about, and um that's the kind of thing that needs to happen only in a public meeting. So that, that's kind of how, why this has gotten complicated in recent years because people can communicate in all sorts of ways, and the courts have started taking notice of it. So I'll, I'll stop. Did we have a hand, hand was up, then it's down?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, um so if I'm hanging out at Crux with my family and four of y'all roll in, am I like, honey, grab the kids, we're leaving?
Right, like. You know, co- comes up often, comes up often. Um the, the Attorney General's Manual on Public Meetings does address that situation, and it essentially says that purely social gatherings uh that might include a quorum of a governing body do not automatically present a public meetings problem. So if, I'll use five because that's current quorum, if five of you find yourself at Crux or even at a, a more uh like a programmed event, like you go to some open house and you're all there. Um the, the advice I give there is be careful, um but you don't have to run for the exits once you count a quorum of your fellow committee members. You can even, I, I mean, technically speaking, you could even stand in a circle, everybody holding their beverage and talk as long as it wasn't about uh COBAC-related business. Now, that's a really hard thing to do because we're humans and we like to talk about things that we have in common with other people. So if you run into people that you know from work or a committee or some other thing, it's highly probable that you're gonna talk about something related to that thing. But technically speaking, no, being in the same place at the same time does not present a problem. It has more to do with the content and subject matter that is considered and discussed. Um I would say in that scenario, like, you know, there is no, there is no aspect of the public meetings law that deals with the appearance of impropriety. Um that's not a thing in public meetings law, but you know, appear, uh to some extent appearances can matter. And um I'm not worried about it with our boards and commissions, including this group. But if somebody wanted to sort of um make assumptions after seeing a quorum of a group together at a social gathering about what they were talking about and raised issues, it, it has happened before. It has happened before. So I think appearances can matter. Um and saying, well, we weren't violating the law and we didn't talk about any of that stuff is fine and hopefully accurate, but it doesn't always prevent somebody from taking issue with what they think might be happening. So I think it's good to be aware of, even if it's not um necessarily an automatic violation.
Um I'm curious, I know we've talked about doing like site visits or things we wanna look at in person. How, how do we go about that since we're not broadcasting it?
Yeah, um I mean, a couple ways to do that. One, you, you can notice, not suggesting you need to do this, but um sometimes those things are noticed as public meetings. You know, this, this advisory group is gonna be at this site uh on this day, at this time. It's properly noticed in advance um because there's this thing that they wanna look at or gather information about. So sometimes it will be publicly noticed and advanced. And you know, is it always accessible? I mean, it can raise challenges because the meeting location has to be accessible under the law. Um so sometimes it is noticed as a public meeting. Um sometimes it's not, and it's not treated as a public meeting, but it comes with, I'll say, sort of um strict requirements on um what, on communication during the visit so that there's no deliberation that happens. Um sometimes it's just broken up into smaller groups. I mean, maybe for this group, maybe send four of you out one day and send four or five of you out the next day, and you can avoid a technical meeting that way. So there, there are different ways to do it, but it's, it just depends on the scenario. But it's a good thing to be conscious of so you can problem-solve in the, the planning rather than the after the fact. And that's really all I want to get out of this presentation for all of you is just to be aware that this thing exists. Um be aware so that you can see problems coming ahead of time and, and really be aware with your, your email and text communications. Um things I recommend to avoid the serial electronic meetings problems are be really careful. Like, we all know through various lessons that we've learned or seen other people learn in modern life, like reply all is often bad. So um ca- careful about replying all. If, if any of you have questions about COBAC business, um in my opinion, it's always better to go directly to Sharissa or Lisa or somebody um with the question rather than blasting a question to the whole group, um because that potentially presents a public meetings issue. So the analogy or the image I like to use is, is a hub and spoke. And um consider, like Sharissa in this case, consider her to be the hub, and all of you are spokes. And you know, technically speaking, in a lot of bicycle wheels, the spokes cross. But imagine a wheel where spokes don't cross, and you, you, you wanna try to avoid crossing um each other. By crossing, I mean interacting with, communicating with outside of a public meeting. And, and I don't want that to be taken so to heart that if two of you run into each other, you think you can't talk about it, you know, but two or three of you, it's fine. But as you creep closer to five, um get, get a little bit more um conscious of um you know, where that could be going. So it doesn't prevent two or three of you from talking about COBAC issues outside of a meeting, but as you creep closer towards a quorum, um your antenna should start to sizzle a little bit, and you should, should be careful. So I said I was gonna take ten or fifteen minutes, I think I'm already at fifteen, which always happens. Um but that, th- th- there is more to the public meetings law than this, of course. Um but just as a general introduction and sort of things to be aware of, I think that's, those are really the main points. There are other, other issues that have to do with what does the notice of a meeting have to encompass um and include? There's an aspect of the law that means that everything, every decision that the public body makes has to be by a public vote in a meeting. Um there's no such thing as anonymous or secret ballots. Once you're a governing body, you have to make decisions openly. I think most of that is fairly intuitive. It's the communication outside of a public meetings stuff that people can get, I think, tripped up on now. Because we're so used to group chats and reply all and email conversations that sort of just develop and start including more and more people. And um that's, that's just a hard thing to deal with, and so I just really wanted to flag that for all of you.
I only reply all to let everybody know to stop replying all.
It's great, great. It's the best use of reply all.
Everybody loves me when I do that.
That's great, perfect.
Uh one question I have is that there occasionally we all need to work on, say, a letter recommendation that we elevate to some department or some, uh or to Eric King. Uh or is that, the, and if we wanted to circulate that for a draft to the commi- to the committee, is that, or do we have to do that in public meetings? Because I'm just, because there are sometimes we get information and then a couple weeks later, city council is voting on that.
Right.
On those items, but, but we need to make a decision as a group. But you know, someone's tasked with writing this and they wanna see some uh review from their uh committee members.
So sometimes, there, there are different ways to handle that, sometimes um informed by the timeline. Uh sometimes something can get, you know, it, it's not necessarily a problem to distribute something to the group. It's just when the input starts happening in a collective way that you may be considered to be deliberating. So um one way that sometimes happens is something will be distributed to the group and maybe the instruction or the request is if you have comments or thoughts, please, please provide them to the staff liaison directly. So again, that, that's kind of an example of that hub and spoke model. Um something goes out from the hub and then back to the hub individually, so that, that's one way to do it. Um sometimes uh a subcommittee or a small group will be developed. Let's say during a public meeting, this issue comes up and there's some consensus or a majority is in favor of writing a letter. Um you, you, the group might talk about some central points and then delegate, for example, one or two members of the committee to work with staff on getting the letter finalized. So that's another um, another way that can work. Um there, there are different, different approaches, but um the official action, whether it's approving the letter or maybe deciding that the responsibility for doing the wordsmithing can be delegated to somebody else, those things have to happen in the public meeting um with a quorum of the group present. But sometimes the work can be sort of farmed out or farmed down to a smaller group in a way that um allows the work to get done in an efficient way that doesn't conflict with the public meetings law.
And then uh one other thing too is that because our charter is written that it's a, it's a quorum of, you know, I, I, I know that may not relate to the public meetings law, but if we have a quorum of members present, if, say, for instance, a couple weeks ago, I was part of the interview process, but I am the one of the, of the, you know, one and therefore a quorum of the members present, does that necessarily need to be a public meeting in that case?
Uh I wanna make sure I understand the question. So we're talking about the, the small group that conducted the interviews in particular?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, my view is that that wasn't, that group would probably not be considered the uh um a governing body of a public body. It included staff, it included one, apparently one member of COBAC. Um so if the question is sort of, was that group subject to the public meetings law? And did the quorum, does the quorum requirement apply? I'd, I'd say no.
Yeah, it's just that, that gray area with our, with our charter now as it's been revised. Just, just wanna be mindful of that because there are times when John and I will, will meet with uh Sharissa and Lisa to review our agenda and see, you know, how we're doing that. And so I just wanna make sure that.
Yep.
If we are doing that.
That's completely fine. Um you know, one or two of you is far less than a quorum of five, and that's typical responsibility of chairs and vice chairs to meet with staff and sort of do the in-between meeting work to keep, keep the work moving along. So that, that doesn't present um public meetings issues. And, and the quorum, you, you know, quorum, quorum is flexible, right? Right now, there are nine, so a quorum is five. If you appoint another, if another member is appointed, it's gonna take six of you to have a quorum and have a meeting. Um with our city council, recently at five members, my view was that the quorum was no longer four, it was three. So um whereas we're pretty comfortable with three of our city council members meeting and being in the same place, not in a public meeting, um when there are seven of them because it's less than a quorum. So our view is we can meet with three of them at the same time to talk about city business. And I mean, city staff meeting with them, not a public meeting. That's, that's fine, but when they were down to five, I had to say, look, we can't, right now, while there are five of you on city council, we can't meet with three of you at a time outside of a public meeting. We can meet with two of you at a time outside of a public meeting. So that, that can, that can shift depending on how the group, whether the group is at full strength or not. So just, just keep that in mind, a quorum, unless stated otherwise, a quorum is a majority of whatever the current complement happens to be.
Good. Thank you for that.
Okay. There aren't any other questions? I can turn it back to, to you folks.
Thank you.
Any other, yeah, thank you. Any other questions from COBAC? There were. Uh thank you all for the questions that, that we did have. Um and from there, we'll go ahead and uh move on to our next item, which is uh item number seven, which is our COBAC Strategic Plan Development Initial Discussion. And so Sharissa, I'll kinda turn that over to you, um to Spearhead.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. Um so this section of our agenda really is intended to be um a discussion. I do wanna give a little bit of context and then maybe suggest some ground rules um or some ideas to guide the discussion, but it is very much intended to be um a discussion. So many of the city's committees and commissions in departments, so in the equity department, we have strategic work plans to help us guide the work that we're doing and then benchmark our success over, over time. Um a lot of that, most of that, all of that is intended to align in some way with city council goals. Um and so in meeting with Eric King, so um everybody, I think, should be on the same page at this point, especially in light of Ian's training, but COBAC is a little bit different in that you're, we're a city managers' committee rather than a city council commission. So Eric is kind of um, you know, overall overseeing the work of COBAC. So Eric King is very interested in knowing more about what COBAC is interested in working on during the coming year, again with a particular emphasis um on the committee's work plan and how it might influence future council goals and then certainly future budgetary funding um in, in next year and in upcoming bienniums. And so that said, historically, COBAC has, and I think, had a looser approach to a strategic plan. I'd like to tighten that up a little bit and bring us closer to how other committees and commissions are, are handling this work and certainly how we are in the equity department. But for a little bit of context, historically, COBAC has advocated for things like a sidewalk plan to make sure that we have a plan to make sidewalks accessible, to maintain them. Um certainly a lot around sidewalk enforcement, um snow removal, curb ramps, curb rub, uh cuts, those types of things. Those are areas where COBAC has really influenced the work of the city council. In fact, you'll see even in the current city council work plan, some language around sidewalks, doing an inventory, making sure things are accessible. So all of that being said, right, the next, the intent, at least on my end and Lisa's end, of the next bit of time that we've got together is to start to brainstorm about activities that should go into COBAC's twenty twenty-three work plan, strategic work plan, so that we can forward that to Eric, who in turn will share with, with the council um to in turn influence council goals and budgetary things. Um so a couple of kind of ground rules, um as I'm trying to think through this brainstorming can sometimes be um messy, and that is totally okay. There isn't a particular direction that this discussion needs to go. If you have ideas, please totally feel empowered to share them with the group. Lisa and I are taking notes. Um we plan to take those notes from today's discussion and come back to the group in August with maybe some more cohesive areas of work where we have combined ideas that seem to make sense or align. Um I do suggest that we keep the ultimate plan or keep in mind that the ultimate work plan should probably have a realistic number of goals or areas of work. I recommend three, maybe four. Um and Eric would really like to, to, to have us put together a plan that includes some goals in a couple of different areas. Um so one thing, maybe on infrastructure, that would be like sidewalks. Maybe there's one thing related to city programs. Maybe there's something we could come up with um to help develop a more accessible internal culture at the city of Bend. Maybe that's related to employment. Um and then potentially, depending on capacity of the group, you might also consider a goal around partnership development. Maybe we want to do some work um in partnering with, with the Human Rights and Equity Commission, or there's a community organization that we kind of wanna partner with. So kind of those four key areas, um I, I know that Eric would appreciate some, some. I I know that Eric would appreciate some some feedback from COBAC. In terms of work that y'all would like to do. So I think with that. We have probably got. Maybe twenty-five minutes to brainstorm and get some feedback from this group. About ideas or things that you would like to see included. When Lisa and I come back in August.
I don't quite know how this would work, but per the. Brainstorm. I think it would be really great to have something to say about overall budget development, especially around transportation. It's always annoyed me that the budget line for, you know, it's just bike ped. And accessibility is kind of like lumped in there. So it would be great to, I think, have some. Involvement in that. And then maybe something around affordable housing. I know, you know, we've talked about that before about. Having somebody either on the Affordable Housing Committee or going to the meetings, but that, you know, I don't have the capacity for that. So. You know, that is a capacity issue, but. Yeah, I think those two things are, you know, pretty important. From an accessibility standpoint, and so it'd be kind of cool to see what we could be involved with there.
Thank you for that, Corey.
Oh, yeah. So part of the reason I joined this committee was my dad had polio. And he had actually joined a committee, a similar committee down in Santa Cruz, and he would talk about some of the things that he did on that committee. And a lot of it was just letting the community know that we exist and that we're a resource for them. So for instance, one thing they would do is they would print out business cards that had. All of our information on it, like, hey, if you need help, call this number. If you have any issues, call this number. We're here for you. Which not only got the word out about, you know, getting more applicants to the committee that might be in a similar, like, are the demographic that we're we're trying to. Support. But it was also like, you know, I would take my dog out to to Good Dog and there's a paved path there and cars would just park right in front of it. And I, you know. I can walk, so I'm like, okay, like, that's that's fine for me, but how many people can't get by there when they're in a, you know, in a in a wheelchair? And there was no one really to call to be like, hey, can you tow these vehicles? Can you get them out of the way? Because this is limiting everyone's access to the great outdoors, which is what we're all about here. And. So I guess it got me thinking like. How do we let people know that we exist? And when people ask us what we do. What are some concrete things we can point to that say like, oh, yeah, we're active in this, we're active in this, we're active in this? You know. If that means like setting up a deal with a towing company to help when people are parked illegally, like, maybe that's something we can do. You know, where where can people call when there's five bird bikes on a sidewalk and they can't get by, you know, like. It'd be nice if they could reach out to us and then we could be like, okay, we'll talk to, you know, Eric King and we'll talk to whatever and we'll we'll like. We'll try and adjust this problem as as best as possible. So I guess I feel like there's a lot of things that we can do. That have an immediate impact that show that we are out there fighting for people. Because a lot of the stuff that we do, like the planning department, that's in the background. People don't really know that we're advocating in the background for sidewalks and. Curb cuts and that kind of thing. So I guess I I I would like to have an end goal of. You know, come September. You know, spending fifty bucks or a hundred bucks and printing out a thousand business cards that we can leave in in people who park in in the spots. On their windshield saying like, hey, we exist, we're here for you. And if you ever see someone parked illegally, here's a number that you can call. If you ever have an issue, here's a number that you can call. If you need your sidewalk. Like, if you need help shoveling your sidewalk, call us, like, we'll.
Oh, sorry.
No, no worries. Anyway, I'm kind of going on there, but I guess I just, I want to be proactive, but I understand that we don't have a budget. So I'm like, okay, like, let's. Let's uh, let's try and get our face out there. Like when they're doing free concerts in the park on Thursdays, like, let's get a table. And let people know that we're there. Especially if people have questions. Anyway, that's that's my diatribe.
Thanks, John. So we've got a couple of folks with hands up. Carl, I know I saw yours first.
Thanks. So an area that I've been thinking about a lot recently is what I think is called on-demand transportation. So taxis, Uber, Lyft. This is something where I didn't even think. About the barriers that exist and frankly, the sort of inequality that exists in Bend right now. Until I had to experience it personally using a power chair. And. I assumed wrongly, it turned out that. Local taxi companies would have. Some number of accessible vehicles. Because in most bigger cities, that's the case. And I found out that in Bend, it's not the case. And I also found out that they are likely not in violation of any laws, not having any. Although. I'm obviously not a lawyer and we need to do more speech, more research about that. But one thing that I think. Are the committee could have a really positive impact in is. Maybe working with the city manager or the city council, I don't know who would be the most appropriate to. Incentivize local transportation providers to. Allow or to provide vehicles that. Have been made accessible for people who are in wheelchairs or perhaps using other adaptive mobility equipment. And it's. It feels like. An issue that's kind of big enough that it requires multiple people to get. Something done on, but maybe not so big that it. Would be impossible and overwhelming. So that's maybe one of the ideas why I thought it's something that this committee could look into.
Thank you for that, Carl. Aaron. Like you've got a comment.
Yeah. You, I'm not sure if this is appropriate, or you can tell me if it's not, but I'm. Also a volunteer with Connect Bend, and that's the group is trying to put a bridge across the shoots at Good Dog. I've met the guy who's donating the land and kind of gone through the legal history of what's around there. And I feel like for accessibility, having a footbridge that crosses over there is a big benefit for. The community as a whole, but also people who have. Any type of mobility issues. I feel like it'd be a. A pretty easy win or a pretty popular thing. So I I feel like I like to work towards supporting that and other types of projects that. Increase accessibility and also can increase accessibility without the need of a car. I think having access to recreation and just moving around that doesn't involve a car would be, you know, beneficial to everybody looking down the road. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Whitney. What are your thoughts?
Kind of chiming in along with what John was saying. I feel like. Part of that process of if if this is something possible for this group to be a source of educating. So that these, so when they're and a source of resources for people to learn more about how they could. Work with the existing infrastructure so that we can be more accessible. A lot of the work that I do is just on helping to. Not to focus on how we could educate the different users so that we're not inhibiting transportation and access. So. That I think is like the general topic of just like education. If that's something within our capacity as a group, we could be a source of, that would be a great end goal.
Great, thanks for that. Real quick, Ashley, I know, I think I saw you putting a hand up a little while ago. I don't want to overlook you.
Yeah, I was gonna say on John's idea of having a card, could we? Beyond like giving it to people, you know, who might need access needs, could we have a card that's like? Did you know? And it's it's something that has COBAC's thing. So when people park illegally, we can put it on there like, did you know this is? And that could be something we also give out to people who are within the disabled community to put on cars. Kind of thing, because I I know I'm always in the situation where someone's doing something illegal and there's no way to enforce it. Or it feels really uncomfortable to say something to them. But if you had something that you could just place on it, I think that would be really, you know. Help inform things, you know, it feels official and it, you know, some community building. So I like that idea. I also wanted to kind of push for the having some sort of training or asking for a training. For our engineers and planners within the city. Around disability equity and just, you know, ADA and and what it looks like to to really make things accessible. I know. You know, we've talked about doing site visits and things and, you know, in the past. The engineers usually come to COBAC when they're done with a project and how problematic that can be. And so I think a way of of getting ahead of this and and really teaching them about what accessibility means, just giving them some context, what what literally does disability mean? And, you know, just some understanding, I think, could be really awesome and seems appropriate for COBAC to ask the city to do.
Thank you for that, Ashley. Jenny, I see you've got a hand up. What's on your mind?
So to piggyback on some of the things that were said going in the education direction and partnership direction, thinking about. The chamber. And doing education for businesses on path of travel and how to appropriately set up a store so that there's. You know, from from parking all the way in what that looks like, because so many of our sidewalks get blocked. And then. Once you get into a store, what that might look like as well and not putting. Extra supplies in your bathroom that would have been accessible, except you put a shelving unit there and and just things that I think when people. Know better, they can do better. So education in the chamber, partnering with the chamber and other business organizations in the city. I agree with having something we can all put on cars when we see them in a place that is. And maybe for businesses too, I just so often walked into a bathroom in a business and wished. I could talk to the manager and the manager's not there and talking to the staff person doesn't necessarily help. So if I had an education card. To leave or, you know, you could contact us as a resource, those kinds of things. I think we could probably brainstorm a bunch of places where we see issues in the community that we could be educationally minded. I think that's it for now off the top of my head. Thanks.
Thanks for that, Jenny. What else?
If we do the card thing, we should just put Eric's number right on it. You can just call him direct. Just kidding. But I like that idea. That's a funny, that's like a fun, easy one. I think that would kind of have. Some. Good benefits just for educational purposes.
Yeah, I don't I don't know if we want our interest in having a. Partner community or committee, but I actually sat in on the Santa Cruz one a couple of weeks ago and got to watch. You know, and they're in the same boat as us is like they're an advisory role, but you know, they're very proactive. So they they talk a lot, especially with the universities and colleges in the area. Coordinate with people on campus there that are in charge of ensuring access to all. And. Yeah, it's 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 a, I basically joined to be like. What can we avoid making a mistake on? And what do you guys recommend? And if you guys ever have time to join one of their meetings, I highly recommend it.
With that, John. Barb?
I had thought about that same kind of education. Towards enforcement, towards compliance with those bird bikes. Is there something, you know, literally to be able to give to community members? That they could leave on a bird bike that says, you know, something in my mind, it would be, we're so glad you're using this thing. But don't leave it in a sidewalk, you know, and how, you know, some kind of message maybe about. You know, respect for all users that, you know, you yourself now are. More vulnerable user, say, than if you were in a car. You know, you have made this choice to become a more vulnerable user yourself. Please don't forget about other users of the transportation. System, you know, along those lines. Opposite from what. I will never say who told me this, but he had stickers. To put on cars that said, I parked in a bike lane. As a city councillor, no, don't do that. That's a terrible idea. As a citizen, I can tell you where to get stickers for cheap.
Thanks for that, Barb. Jenny, I see your hand is still up. Did you have other thoughts you wanted to share?
Yeah, I thought of a couple more things. Barb, that totally makes me want to have a sticker that says, I park in accessible parking spots. That that's that one. I want a sticker for that. But I was. Curious about. Accessible bus stops and path of travel to bus stops. That was something ten years ago that was an issue. Maybe it's been dealt with, but just to see if there's been. If those those pathways are have been updated and bus stops are are accessible. And then and even thinking about, you know, that we have bus stops without seating, which if someone has a a mobility issue, that seems really. Who's using the bus really inaccessible to have to wait for a bus without a place to sit. And and then going back to the education ideas, thinking about. Someone mentioned doing education for. You didn't say architects, you said engineers, but also thinking about the folks who do the inspections and where we're at with. Checklist for the ADA for inspectors on new building sidewalks and new construction. Specifically commercial. And doing that education for developers and and just again, that broad range of people coming into our community. And if you're gonna. If you're gonna make money off of our community, can you make it an equitable and accessible space as you are developing? And so what kind of education is going to those folks as well?
Thank you. You've got a hand up.
Yep, yes, thank you. And these are all. Excellent ideas. You know, the bird bike thing is a very interesting idea as well and. You know, I don't know if this is something that we as a community provides spaces that are outside of the public sidewalk. That people can park these things and and required signage that. For that areas as well, so we can, so if someone is using it, they're like, okay, I'm not just gonna dump it in the middle of the sidewalk. Here's a designated spot for. For this bike in the future. And I, you know, the idea of the bridge over the dischutes, you know, if there's. You know, I could see that as as something that COBAC could review as a group and provide recommendations and feedback on. And also help to support and maybe sponsor in a way, not not necessarily financially sponsored, but. Throw backing behind it to say, this is a great idea for these reasons, you know. And and, you know, the community outreach, you know, Jenny mentioned the. Talking with the Chamber of Commerce and and as an architect, a lot of times we design, or all the time, actually, we design our buildings. To be accessible, but once the occupants and once the users of those spaces. Do. Do start to occupy and start to run their business, you know, seeing inside those restroom areas or. You know, with the shelves and just making sure the paths of travel are clear enough, you know, that that's an interesting idea and I'm much. Sure the avenue of how to do that, but that could be like a post occupancy inspection that's required. That the city have been through their building division and development division does, but. Just just sort of piggybacking on all those ideas. And I love the idea of the business cards as well and having a booth at. At the events around town, just to show who we are and we're out there in the community and not just here on our. Zoom calls once a month.
Thanks, Nick. Corey?
Yeah, so I really have no idea what kind of. Situation there is, but I'd be curious about how accessible our jail is. There's a, I'm not sure, there's a city jail, right? Or is it just county? I don't know. Anyway. Oh, go ahead.
I can speak to that. It's it's the county runs the jail, so.
I can speak to that. It's, it's, uh, the county runs the jail. So, um, it's,
Wouldn't really be able to do anything.
PD takes folks there, but it's a county facility.
I see. Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, I not like statistically, almost half of people in, that are incarcerated are, are disabled or have some type of disability. Um, so it would be, that might, that would be cool. But, uh, if it's not in the city, then I guess we have no purview there, but.
Thanks for sharing that Cory. Other thoughts at this point? All right, so.
Sorry, I do have, I do have one more.
Go ahead.
Um, I was thinking a bit about, um, adaptive recreation, um, and Ben Parks and Rec. I know they do offer some adaptive recreation. Um, and we're also lucky to have OAS, which, which does a lot of, um, adaptive recreation opportunities in Bend. But I've lived in other places where there was, the, the Parks and Recreation Department offered a more uh, robust selection of like fitness classes that were inclusive of different, different abilities. And that specifically is something that I haven't seen, um, in the Ben Parks and Rec offerings. And obviously, you know, we're not Ben Parks and Rec. We don't tell them what to do. But I wonder if there's a way for us to collaborate with them in some way to, um, help them expand those offerings.
Thanks for sharing that Carl. John, I did see, I think you had a hand up. Do you have another thought you wanted to share?
Oh, I just had a quick thought about, you know, how there's so many outdoor competitions in town. If there are any that are, um, with, you know, the disabled community, we should be involved in that. Um, you know, if there's like a, anyway, if there's a race or if there's a, you know.
I'd like to piggyback on that from what John just said. I know back in the day, we, uh, the accessibility coordinator in, in our committee was often involved in helping a big events to ensure that the events themselves were accessible. And maybe that's still happening, but if that's fallen off, that would be great to also have a hand in making sure our, all of our events in town are accessible.
Yeah, I love that idea. Not just athletic events, but stuff like the free concerts.
Great. Thank you all, um, so much for that discussion. I think there are a lot of really great ideas. Um, recognizing that we've just got about 15 minutes left. Um, if you do have additional ideas pop up, this is absolutely not the end of the discussion and August won't be either. Um, I think this is very much an iterative process. It's just an opportunity to get some additional, some initial ideas out there. Lisa and I will take this information and try to distill it a little bit. Um, that being said, we've got a long time until August. So I think what I'd say is my email inbox is open and my telephone works really well. So if you have other ideas that come up, please feel free to give me a call, send me an email and we can add them in. Like I said, you know, maybe it isn't the city of Ben, but I don't think that that means we can't mention it here and see how it fits kind of in those core key buckets, um, of work that, um, we have opportunities really to contribute to. So thank you again. I'm excited to continue this discussion as we work towards really creating a robust, um, strategic work plan for this group and then sharing it via Eric with City Council.
Excellent. Yeah. Thank you everyone. And thank you, Sharice. Um, for the next steps on this, uh, are we is, uh, just from a, a public meetings law and also the, um, how to run a public meeting. Uh, would we then, uh, continue the discussion, uh, narrow it down to our sort of top three or four and vote on those in upcoming meetings?
That would be my, that would be what I would envision because ultimately I think that that strategic plan is going to be a public document. And so the work around that should be done publicly, I think in terms of finalizing what that work is. That said, um, Ian's given me the thumbs up. That said, um, sending me, just me and Lisa an email if you have additional ideas outside of today's discussion is not a problem. Um, as far as the public meetings laws, but if you send an email to everybody right now, it would be. So procedurally, email, call Lisa and I, no problem. Finalizing the, the kind of work areas that should be done in a public meeting and it will be. Anything Ian that you would add to that that I'm, that we're missing maybe from a process perspective?
No, couldn't have, couldn't have said it better myself. And, and, you know, I, I'll say again, um, don't take anything I offered today to mean that a couple of you can't get together for coffee or whatever and talk about this stuff. But, but the real work, the formal work on identifying priorities and focusing, um, that does need to happen as Sharice has said in a, in a public meeting.
Let's see, and John, I see you've got a hand up.
Yeah, I was wondering if we should do it like they got the two new city councillors where we have every idea with like a three sentence write-up of what that might look like. And then we give our top, each one of us gives our top three, we see what overlaps. And, um, if there's five, then we have a discussion at the next meeting. If there's three, then we're done.
That's an interesting idea. Um, give that some thought. All right. Thanks folks.
Good. Okay. Um, I don't think we have any, uh, move, we'll move on from there just to, so we can wrap up here today. Uh, I don't think we have any members, no, no attendees from the public. Is there any, any public comments that we'd like to have, uh, before we move on to, um, uh, uh, the accessibility manager update and, uh, council member update?
I'm not seeing any Nick.
Okay, perfect. Then we move on to, uh, item number nine, accessibility equity manager update, Sharice?
Sure. Thank you. Just one thing to update on, um, real quick. So those of you who have been on Quebec for a while know we've been talking about stipends for committee and commission members. There were changes made to the city code, uh, in support of that. Currently, um, the Equity Inclusion Director, Anne Allen, is working on a policy and processes to roll that out. Um, we don't have a firm timeline yet on when those will be finalized, but we will definitely be back to this group um, with those details once we have them. Um, so probably sometime in the next couple of months, we'll come back and have a discussion about, you know, documentation we're going to need, um, and where we'll be going with those stipends. So any questions on any of that at this point? Okay, that's all I have. Thanks folks.
Thank you. And then, uh, moving on to next gen item, uh, council member liaison comments, uh, Barb, do you want to give us some updates?
Sure. Thank you Nick. Thanks so much, everybody. That was such a great discussion about strategic plan. I love that you have such excellent, specific ideas about what we could be doing in our community. I think that's great. Um, uh, it's, you know, the only thing I can think to talk about are those bird bikes, bird bikes, yikes. Um, from my perspective, it absolutely is a good news, bad news situation that we have now. The good news is that people are using the rental bikes. This is fantastic. People are getting out of their cars, they're driving, they're riding them around. And obviously the bad news is they are leaving them in places where they should not be left. And they are blocking sidewalks and they are limiting access for other people, which is obviously very bad news. So, um, what I have learned, um, number one, you know, to me, the very most important thing is it not only is this a pilot program, but the intent is not to run the pilot through the summer and then evaluate how it went. Those evaluations are taking place almost on a moment by moment basis right now, um, it, at the city of Bent. And so those bikes have technology to be able to limit literally where they can go in the city. Um, they call it geo fencing, I think. And what I learned is if you're, uh, I thought maybe they were completely locked and you could not move them at all unless you paid for them. Oh no, turns out you can get on these things and ride them. You just don't have the motor assist and a really loud alarm goes off. Well, sadly, as a former eighth grade teacher, I think maybe some of you can see, you know, in advance, well, what's gonna happen there? Yeah, we got some kids who are riding these things around, you know, kind of because the alarm is going off. One parent told me that, you know, they were having a lot of fun with those things last week. Last week's school, riding by the school with the alarm blowing. So, you know, here we go. Um, the one, one thing I will just straight up admit you guys that seems like a real oversight to me was they did not land on the streets with an identifying number on every bike. Um, that, you know, I'm just apologize for my part in that oversight. Um, so that is changing. At this very moment, maybe they already do have stickers on them so that you can report an individual bike. So you can say which bike it was that was being misused. And that still doesn't get us to the problem of teenage kids doing crazy things. But I kind of feel like the problem of teenage kids doesn't really have a whole lot to do with blue bikes. They're gonna think of some way to cause trouble the last week of school. Um, my mom got a cow onto the roof of her school. Um, maybe any of you with familiarity with, um, cows, they'll go up, but they will not come down. So, you know, that was, or maybe it was the principal's office on the second floor. So anyway, kids will always find something, whether it's a cow or a blue bike. So, um, but anyway, so identifying marks means that you will be able to say, you know, and maybe even take a picture, look, here are the blue bikes that are parked in the sidewalk, parked illegally. Then the blue bike company can get in touch with those actual users. Um, so, and then the other thing that I thought was really interesting was regarding that geo fencing. So we, I guess we can literally put a digital fence where if they cross that line, that motor will turn off and the alarm will start sending, shooting off. So that one, we intentionally didn't want to turn on to start cause we weren't sure where do people want to use these things? You know, right now, we really are trying to collect data on who wants to use them, where are they being picked up and where are they being left? Without it just being a complete disaster for people, people who are trying to use the sidewalks. So back to, you know, what can we do about these problems? Right now, we are allowing people to leave them essentially anywhere, you know, except in the middle of a sidewalk. You know, but, but they're called dockless for that reason. The bikes that we had in the past, they had a fancy bike rack that was the dock and you had to return them to a dock. And obviously that very much limited, um, how much people can use them. You can only take them to and from one of these approved dock bike racks. Well, these, you can leave them elsewhere and they've got a little chip in them. And people in the middle of the night go out and find them because they've got this little locator chip in them. And then those folks take them back to the, um, the, the, I don't want to say approved locations, but those starter locations. So, um, we very much are trying to get that data right now of where do people want to use them? Where are they leaving them? And if people are leaving a bunch of them in a single, well, then obviously we need to find a, an approved location to drop those off there. Right? So, um, I guess the, the, the kind of nuclear option would be just, okay, no more. They, we just have to go back to that system that was like the docked system where you can only leave these things at a public bike rack. And that is one of our options. We, I think we do have the technology to be able to tell whether someone dropped, dropped one of these things at some random location or whether they left it at an approved bike rack. Again, right now, we really would like people to have more flexibility than that. And so we're trying to collect that data of where are people actually using them instead of putting bike racks at places that seem like a good di- idea to us, but maybe nobody would really use them. Um, the last thing I will say is we all understand that yes, we need more bike racks. We need more public bike racks. And that is, you know, something we have seen in advance. But again, we, uh, from my perspective, I would rather have that data of where are people actually using them before we invest in a permit, more permanent public bike racks. Yes, Ashley?
Um, did you look into how Portland does their system beforehand?
Oh, I, I don't know the answer to that, Ashley. Um, do you have a specific suggestion from what they are doing?
I mean, I, I know that they have specific locations to leave them. I just know that I rarely see them on the sidewalks and so something's working, you know? It seems to be effective and, you know, they've been doing it for a while. So maybe they have some, some good data and information on, you know, best ways to do that. So it might be worth looking into.
Thank you so much, Ashley. And it does look like, so what we are doing is, um, the locations where, where they're returned are just painted green, um, locations. They aren't necessarily, you know, bike racks. And, you know, and that actually, so there's an opportunity that is more low, low cost than a bike rack. And Ashley, I think that's exactly what we will start to see is more of those green painted, approved locations for people. It's in order that they know, okay, I can't park in the sidewalk. Where can I park? I'm afraid that's kind of the information that people don't have right now is what is that alternative? Thank you so much, Ashley. Yeah, we absolutely were, will be looking more into their program and how is it they're getting better compliance than we are? Any other questions? Um, calm, and then here's the last thing. I am saying to people who are writing us, you know, genuinely thank you. This is a pilot program. We need information. We want information. If you see these things left in some crazy place, used in some crazy way. No, I never anticipated middle school kids riding these things around with the alarms screaming, you know? So it was genuinely helpful for me to get that email, you know? Please don't feel like you're bothering anybody sending emails about what you're seeing and how are people using them? And where are they stacked up? You know, that's the information we are trying to get right now. So you can write your city councillors and then it's actually our parking manager, Toby Marks, who is working on this program, um, at the city of Bent. So, you know, don't hesitate specifically to write me. Um, and thank you, everybody.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your update today. Um, and I, and that, that leads us into our next item, which is our, uh, August meeting agendas. Um, and I think that that would be an interesting, uh, agenda item to add. Uh, Barb is that, uh, having the parking manager to actually. Uh, Barb, is that having the parking manager to actually attend one of our meetings?
I, I thought of that two days, yes, I thought of that two days ago and it was just kind of too late to ask him to attend this meeting. Absolutely, Nick, I think that's exactly what we should do and we'll invite Toby to our next meeting.
Perfect. Cool. Thank you. Um, and in addition to that, uh, we have our strategic work plan that we'll have further discussion on and hopefully move some of those items, uh, those, those more popular items to the forefront. Uh, and Sharissa or Lisa, do we have any other items on our agenda for August?
We don't have any on our end. We're looking for feedback from COCA, or excuse me, from COBAC, so but perhaps those two items will be plenty.
Sorry, was one of the items you're referring to the um, going over the list of um, action items that we submitted today and deciding on those?
Yes, yeah, going over the, our, our, the activities that we talked about today with like the the budget items, the community outreach, the education, Chamber of Commerce, all that stuff uh, to to go through that. And I think that will take a, a good majority of our meeting. I'd like to dive into those topics more and and figure out uh, uh, pass, our path forward on those items. And then also to get that parking manager uh, update and discussion as well. Uh, does anyone have any other uh, items uh, for our agenda next, uh, for our next meeting in August? Okay. Well, excellent. I think, and those are our two items, Lisa and Sharissa. And then our next uh, COBAC meeting will take place on Thursday, August 25th at, at between 1:00 and 2:30. And we will be taking a break in July and uh, in the, in, in a room. I hope everyone has a happy Fourth of July and gets to enjoy our summer weather here and we'll see you in August. And with that, our meeting uh, today, Thursday, June 23rd, is adjourned at 2:35 PM. Thank you all.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.